Everything right in sequence, so I don't get confused on this.
Oh, by reading.
Yeah.
Look at this, this is great, in large print.
And you check it off as your brother's gonna read.
Oh, look at that sequential.
Yeah.
Look at these real.
Yeah, that's what we receive. She and Dr. Davis, I've never done this before, so. Girl takes good care of us, doesn't she? No, two Davis for one Snickers.
Ah.
I know what. Okay, I know what. You have three minutes. So, please, let me know when it's up. Josh, is this the one you want? I'm sorry, is that the one you want? Huh? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You guys are barking.
Are you boys too late? What are you boys? It's scary. Yes, certain people have certain things.
I think we should have more doors. I'm thinking carrots, sticks, um, so we have. Doesn't that sound good?
I don't know. I mean, with a natural.
Yes.
In the meeting. Here in the meeting. A piece of wood.
Yes.
Yeah. So, she can say, "We're interarian," and see how long your.
Are you carpooling, band-aided?
I'm not. Um, changed a lot of things.
Yeah.
That's just what you do.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Some breath.
It's right next to that, you've been in that town before.
The Wild Time Deli?
Next time, go down early. It's cool. Yeah. It's called the Wild, T-Y-T-H-Y-M, and it's right next to the band-aid office. It's like two doors down, like a thing building.
Okay.
It is.
Oh, here's a band-aid.
Oh, that's right, oh, that's right, they used to be the band-aid office. That's right. Or if you ever go to the band-aid office. Take the. Yeah.
Okay, Dennis, you're on.
Welcome to Thursday night live show of the Capital City Council. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Botorff.
Here.
Councilmember Vertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Uh, here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Led by Ron Graves.
A pledge of allegiance, who would fight, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a certificate of appreciation tonight for Ron Graves. Ron, would you please step up? Stephanie will do. Thank you. The microphone.
I can almost step this far. We get to sit?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna sit and be comf-, we're gonna be sitting, be comfortable doing this. Um, Ron has been my planning commissioner for a number of years. I've been his planning commissioner. We're sort of like brother and sister in many ways. We're very, very different, but in our work in Capitola, it's, it really has been a real unique partnership. I beat him in nineteen eighty-four. He got back on in eighty-six, and we have been bosom buddies since then. We have disagreed on very little. Our visions have been the same. He's been my mentor and teacher, and he's been on the, he was on the council for thirty-two years. I don't know whether I'll break his record or not. It's, I've been on, I've been on twenty-four, and I have a few, I have, I would have a few more to go, and you can imagine how long that is. Ron served on the planning commission for nine years, and throughout our work in the community, it's made such a huge difference to have someone like Ron here. Ron, as a former PG&E person, has been in most of the homes in Capitola. He can tell you what's going on inside, how many bedrooms, how many illegal bedrooms or bathrooms or granny units, and how many people live there, and who the people are, and whether, whatever. I mean, it's, and, which has been really helpful in planning this community. In planning this community, it really has helped to have the sense of history that we have, to know who's who, who's done what, who wants to do what, who got away with doing that, who's not gonna get away with doing that again, and where are we going? Where are we going as a community? And we have, we have, together and with others, have tried to take this community into a very sustainable, economically productive, environmentally sound place, and I think we've done that. We developed the economic sense to, the economic plan on Forty-first Avenue to have the economic engine to pay the bills here. In the sixties and seventies, this was a little tiny town, and it had very few employees, very few services, and, um, you know, streets didn't get paved regularly, and you didn't have all the parks and the recreation and the, all the beach activities and things like that. So, little by little, as the economic engine was developed in this community, the services were provided, and as the services were provided and planned by this council and by the planning commission, very, very closely. And that's why, that's why I have to say that I feel so strongly about the city council and the planning commission meeting together more often, working together, having a shared vision. You need that. When we are as diverse as we are, and with the push and pulls that we have, the individual interests that we have, it's hard to move forward together, and that's why I think it's really important the next year for the planning commission and the city council to work together as closely as Ron and I have and others have through the next couple of years, because it makes a difference. You are on the same page. The community is on the same page. You build a community center. You build a gymnasium. You build the bridge across SoCal Creek. You build the library. You buy the land for it. You know, you do those things moving forward together, and that's where I see us. We are all built out now, so we're, ours is tweaking, but that tweaking will make all the difference, I believe, in the future, and that's why I believe the general plan and these implementing ordinances and so forth are so important. So, the, the last thing I just want to say is thank you so much. Um, we have, um, a, um, great history together, and we have lots of stories to tell, which we will tell. We're gonna do an oral his-, some oral histories together, where we'll spend an hour or two dishing the dirt and telling the stories about Mrs. Blodgett when she'd come down here and ask for the moon, and wanna do, you know, I don't remember how many, twenty-five, thirty-five homes back in there, and never could quite get it together. Came down one time and wanted a sign there, right, the railroad tracks, saying, "El Salto Resort," and we said, "Oh gee, I guess we have to let her have a sign for her business." Business is terrible. Anyway, we let her have a sign, I don't think she ever put it up. But anyway, it's been interesting times, and we will tell some great stories, and thank you, and if you'd like to say a few words tonight? This is only the beginning, Ron, we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Well, I'd like to thank you, first of all, for appointing me to the planning commission. Um, being you mentioned my, uh, time on the council, I would like to thank, take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Capitola, uh, for voting for me. Uh, eight terms in office is a very long time, and we have term limits now, thank God. Um, that does not reflect on any of the people sitting up here. They are entitled to as many terms as they can get elected for. I do want to thank the planning staff, though, that I've worked with the last eight years, many of whom are not here. We have had such a turnover in the planning staff that I hope the present staff stays with us for a very long time. I'm going to put my one last comment in, comment in, and that is, I think we could spend our money a little more wisely. Um, when we ran a bond election that was very successful, a few years back, we promised some infrastructure improvements, and that was roads, and, uh, they are getting deplorable. One only has to go from Capitola Avenue to the railroad tracks on Monterey Avenue, go on Park Avenue, Thirty-eighth Avenue, go in the Diamond Forty-second Avenue area. If we let these roads go much longer, they're going to have to be completely scarified, and it's going to be a monumental cost to the citizens of Capitola. So, I hope we get in there and do some overlays, some slurry sealing, uh, some chip sealing before we slurry seal, anything to preserve them so that we don't have this big bill in the future. Again, Stephanie, thank you for the time, and I won't take any more time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron Graves. We have another, uh, uh, excuse me, we have another proclamation to serve right now, and I will read this from a. May tenth to May sixteen has been, has been designated as National Police Week, whereas there's approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Capitola Police Department. Whereas fifty-one years ago in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed the public law eighty-seven dash seven twenty-six, designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Pride Police Week. Whereas sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in sixteen thousand injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in nineteen, in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line, in line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas fourteen new names of fallen heroes from the great state of California are being added to the National Law Enforcement Law Officers Memorial this spring, including a hundred and thirty-two officers killed nationwide in, in two thousand and fourteen. It's, that's unexcusable. A hundred and fifty-six officers killed in previous years. Whereas the national, whereas the service and sacrifice of officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, the Twenty-seventh Annual Candlelight Virginal, on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Whereas the Candlelight Virginal is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May six-, tenth through the sixteenth, and whereas May fifteenth is designated Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag will be flown to half-mast on that day. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Norton, Mayor Capitola, do hereby proclaim May tenth through May sixteenth as National Police, Police Week in Capitola, California, and publicly salutes the service of our law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across this nation. And I am presenting this, um, this to, to Cliff Solma, and Rudy, can you come here too, please? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a, a report at closed sessions, please.
Legal council, can you hear me? Legal council met in closed session and, um, to discuss the items referenced in the closed session agenda, and there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there any additional materials to, to be received by the council? Chris, Steve, please.
Uh, yes, I have passed out a revised contract for item ten B. Should have it with you there, and there are copies in the back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. This is a time for public comment. Um, oral communication is allowed at this time for all members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Presentation will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Individuals will not speak more than once during oral communications. All speakers must address the entire city council and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. All speakers are requested to print their name, the sign sheet, and at the podium, and, um, so their name can be actively recorded. Please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lippi, and I live on Babewa Avenue, and I just wanted to say that I am opposed to the proposed skate park on Monterey Avenue, um, because I believe that we have such a beautiful skate park going in just a few miles from there. So, I think that having two skate parks in Capitola is redundant. I also think that it's too close to a school, and there's too many houses right close by to that. My daughter lives in one of them.
Thank you, Nelson. Thank you very much.
My name is Jim Crowley. Talk about the skateboard park a little bit. Want to thank you guys for your service and your commitment to that. Uh, I know that, uh, political pressures can be tough at times. I'm taking down the Carmel Valley Dam, and I got nine different state and federal agencies I have to deal with, and so I know how, how construction projects can take on a life of their own, and, uh, this one seems to be stirring up both sides of the coin, and, you know, we talked about that thing being close to the school, and, and I, and I know that, you know, like I said before, that the school has a surf team, so I don't, I'm sure that they could start a skate team as well. Uh, all my kids skate. They're not criminals. Uh, I know that everything has criminal elements, doesn't matter, seems to be the world we live in. Thank God we got a good police department who already left. I remember when Cliff started, we both had dark hair, so, uh, I, I, I know that, uh, there's been a lot going on with this skate park, park thing, and, and, you know, I think that park needs that skate park. I think it also needs a bathroom. Like I said before, when I was here before, I built that park, and when we were building it, we were kind of wondering why it didn't get those amenities, and, uh, you know, that skate park, uh, when you build it, you can make, uh, dirt mounds around it so it can't be seen, it can't be heard, uh, so you don't have to have a fence. That way baseballs don't get in it. There's a whole bunch of things you can do there. Uh, I've got granite construction kind of actively involved in it. We're gonna, we're gonna donate some time to it if it proceeds, so, uh, I will be actively involved in that, so, let's stay to the course.
Thanks, Jim.
Hello, I'm gonna sign real fast. I'm just gonna write "N." family, 'cause otherwise I'm gonna waste all my time. No, I'm sorry, the kids have to sign in too. His penmanship's terrible. So, I just wanted to come and, uh, just say thank you guys for considering the skate park. Um, my wife and I, we came with our twins totally for sympathy points, but also because, um, I mean, everything that we have is because of skateboarding. I've worked in it, um, for the past six years, and, uh, we're, we're originally from the East Coast, and we're out here all because of skateboarding, and, uh, buddy. And I just wanted to say thanks from my kids, because, you know, we really hope that this skate park goes in so that when they get a little bigger, they too can enjoy skateboarding. So, thank you very much for pushing it forward and continuing.
Thank you for showing up tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, city staff. My name is Richard Lippi. I live on Monterey Avenue, and, um, I'd like to, um, thank you very much for moving forward again on McGregor Park. Uh, I've been monitoring that. The progress is coming along, and, uh, it looks like it's gonna be a wonderful project, anxious to see it completed. Um, I'm still, um, opposed to the idea of a proposed, the proposed skate park at Monterey Park. I feel that it's not a good fit for the park. But, uh, the main thrust of my talk tonight, and I submitted, um, uh, my information in writing to the city clerk here at it, um, I'm concerned about information, documents that are missing from the city website in regards to the February eleven, two thousand and fifteen, uh, meeting. The action summary is, there's a link for the action summary, but the action summary is no longer there. Uh, the action summary link points to the amended minutes, and there were action, there was an action summary, and I know that the wording is different, and I've asked on two occasions if that could be reinstated as an action summary, and, um, and hasn't happened yet. So, I'm not quite sure who I should be talking with, but if you want to give me, if you want to name a name, or shall I figure it out after the meeting?
Why don't you talk to Jamie Goldstein, please?
What was that?
Would you please talk to Jamie Goldstein about this?
Talk to Jamie Goldstein, thank you. Okay, um, I'd like to address the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, city council RDA meeting records. The agenda packet is missing from the city website, uh, on that meeting. Um, that was the meeting that, where the city council discussed the possibility of moving forward on a nine thousand square foot skate park. Um, since the, this, uh, skate park, uh, project is so hotly contested and very controversial, um, I think it's important for the citizens of Capitola to have this information to review, and I, um, we'll talk with Jamie, I guess, about, uh, posting the agenda packet for January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve. Lastly, uh, the meeting video from that meeting, January twenty-sixth, is missing. It's not available. I did request it, April seventeenth. Uh, it was provided on April twenty-second, but it cost me twenty-seven dollars to get a, to get the video. Um, I'd like for it to be posted so citizens can see it without having to pay the twenty-seven dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Hello. As you know, I'm Lisa Steingrube, and I am opposed, here again, to voice my opposition to the proposed six thousand square foot skate park in Monterey Park. The neighborhood it affects most has had no input to the size and level of this park, and what that gentleman before said, that you can put mounds instead of fences, well, we've never had any input on what's gonna go there. Um, that's not the way the city cap-, city of Capitola usually works. For other city projects, committees of interested residents were organized, and all the ramifications of the projects were discussed before a plan was adopted. An example of this is the Capitola Library Committee, where I've been a member for the last five years, or the Rissman Mansion Development Project, in which my husband participated. Also, both my husband and I came to the McGregor Skate Park planning meetings held in this room last year. Community impart, input has been an integral part of the process for those projects, and I'm sure for many others that I don't know about. This did not happen with Monterey Avenue skate park design. I know some may say you're turning a deaf ear to our pesty appearances and our outcries at the city council meetings, but I do think you're listening. Supporting such a contentious and negative project is not the way Capitola usually does business, and what I hope you see is that how committed we are to preserving the integrity of our neighborhood.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening. My name is Peter Matur, uh, from, sitting next door, and, uh, I haven't been here for quite a while, and, uh, because, um, usually I don't have a rental car on the week, uh, during the week. I used to take the bus, and, um, I think you guys are being short-changed with the bus route. Uh, the last bus that leaves downtown Capitola in this area is something like five, fifth, five thirty-nine or something like that, in that neighborhood, and there, there's no way to get to this meeting here. Uh, while you can get to the meeting here if you get here early enough, but you can't, there's no bus ride to the Capitola Mall after, uh, when you guys are finished. So, that's why, one of the reasons I haven't shown up lately. And, um, um, it seems to me that if I ever get, uh, if I ever get, uh, um, Rissman Mansion into a youth hostel, uh, we'd need a better bus service, because lots of, most of, at least more than half, maybe three quarters of the customers that we have arrive by bus on foot, and of course, in Santa Cruz, the hostel is fairly close to the, to the bus station, to the main, main bus station here. It's quite a race to get from, either from the Rissman Mansion to Capitola Mall. The closest would be on Bay Avenue, just across the bridge and, uh, the, the parking lot there, that would be the best, but, uh, since so, one or two of you got, are people, uh, sitting on the, on the metro board, seems to me you should, uh, get your money's worth and get better bus service in this town. It's really atrocious. Um, even on, uh, where the hostel is, and bus number three isn't very good either, especially on the weekends, because it, in the summer, it won't be running the beach loop, and you have to go all the way out to the end of the Delaware before it does the beach loop. But here, it's even worse. Uh, you don't have anything in, at nighttime. Um, yeah, um, actually, actually, there's a later bus, but that only runs on the weekends, so Saturday and Sunday, or Friday and Saturday, I guess, or, no, Saturday and Sunday do have a later bus service. So, anyway, um, please keep that in mind, maybe I leave a bus schedule for you guys, uh, since you obviously never ride a bus, otherwise you would be, also be complaining about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Hi, um, council members and Mayor Norton. I'm Marilyn Warder. I live at two eighteen Unibro Court, and you've heard from me before, but, um, my neighbor Al Globus has a difficult time getting away in the evenings, um, because of his home situation, and I have a statement from him. If I could read that, I would like to do that. Um, at a recent city council meeting regarding the proposed Monterey Skate Park, proponents voiced two main themes. One, Monterey Park is central, and two, McGregor Park is unsafe. Both are false. Monterey Park is not central in Capitola. It's very near the city boundary, in addition to being very close to McGregor. A central skate park for Capitola would be right here at City Hall. McGregor is perfectly safe if you drive your kids there. Right now, many proponents drive their kids to the Scotts Valley Skate Park, which is very inconvenient. Driving their kids to McGregor would be a lot more convenient, but in any case, the issue with McGregor isn't kid's safety as much as it is parental convenience. Uh, the problem with Monterey Park is not that the, is that the immediate neighborhood, neighbors, those like, that are adjacent to the park, don't want it, because skate parks make lousy neighbors. Note that McGregor and Scotts Valley Park have essentially no neighbors. As a thought experiment, only Al would say that, um, try moving the skate park to Hidden Park, and see how many of those neighbors think it's a good idea. I mean, sure, they signed the petition saying, "Oh, this'll be fine," but, you know, they really didn't think about their neighbors who live adjacent to Monterey Park. But Al thinks that there is a safe, central location in Capitola that doesn't tear up any greenery and forever prevent Capitola from having a regulation soccer field. It's the parking lot behind this building. Um, it doesn't have many neighbors. It is far more convenient for kids who live on the other side of the creek, and we would lose a little bit of parking revenue, but only on. revenue, but only on those few summer days when both lots are completely full. But you gain some revenue from the parents who drive their kids to that skate park, pay for parking, and then shop in Capitola. And besides that, it's right across the street from the fire department, which is very convenient for the broken bones that inevitably happen at skate parks. So, Al and I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Mayor Norton, City Council, thank you for your time. I am opposed to the proposed 6,000-square-foot park on Monterey. I am, I am for the park on McGregor. We just need to move forward with one park. I don't even know how to say this, but I'm still stunned that the neighborhood surrounding that park had no input on the size and design. That's amazing to me. And I think it is to, well, maybe not to you, but it is to us that live around there. And I, I still can't quite believe that. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Cheryl Devlin, and I am in the neighborhood right across the street from the proposed Monterey Park. I am opposed to, such as its proposed Monterey Park. And I feel that the McGregor site is, has already been approved, and it's already in the works. The only thing that I would like the city council and municipalities maybe work together is to have the railroad pathway connect and sidewalks put in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cheryl.
Hello. My name is Helen Bryce. I am very happy to see construction resume at McGregor Park. I love parks, and I've been a supporter of this project from the beginning. And I'm happy that both Mayor Norton and Public Works Director Steve Jesberg have assured me that McGregor Park will be a safe place for Capitola's children. Capitola really needs this park, and I am glad to see it back on track. I'm also happy to see things moving forward with the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail. This trail connects people to parks. It's so wonderful to know that a child or an adult living, for example, in Capitola Village or on Riverview can easily and safely walk, bike, or skate to McGregor Park. I also really like the way things are moving forward for Rispin Park. Like the McGregor Park project, the Rispin Park project has been created with a conceptual overview, a plan that takes into consideration the best use of the space and includes input from the people who live near the park. Rispin Park is a wonderful project. On the other hand, I feel very strongly that the proposed skate park in Monterey Park is not in the best reasons, interests, is not in the best interests of Capitola's residents. There is no overview that considers the best use of the space in this precious park. I personally feel that the city of Capitola needs to change direction on this issue and preserve the green space in Monterey Park, especially in light of the fact that we are losing park space in Capitola. In any case, we need a plan for the future, one that considers the best use of Monterey Park, just as we have for Rispin and for McGregor. Thank you again for moving forward on Rispin Park and on McGregor Park. I look forward to McGregor's opening day, when we will finally see children happily enjoying the Capitola Skate Park and the wagging dogs of our resident dogs.
Thank you.
Wagging tails. Dogs wagging dogs. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to, else like to address the council? Please step forward.
Good evening. I'm Marie Martarella. I wanted to come up, Tricia and I just had a few words we wanted to say. Mainly, thank you. Thank each and every one of you for your continued support of the Monterey Skate Park project. Just wanted to give you a little update that a week ago, we formally submitted the plans, and the permit fees were submitted, everything to the city. It is under review. And we're moving ahead. And we're very, very excited about that. We want to thank you also for allowing the process to take place. I also want to say that there is one thing that through this process that remains clear to us, is the amount of support that folks do have for this project. We are thrilled, you know, to be spearheading such a project that is truly going to be for the better of this community and the children. So, thank you again. I can imagine that, you know, there are times, as I think Tim said earlier, it's not fun sometimes to be in the political limelight. I can tell you that as well. We are definitely feeling that. But we are very firmly planted in seeing this project through. And the number of supporters that we have just confirms that we are definitely moving in the right direction. So, thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Marie.
Hi, I'm Tricia Proctor, resident of Capitola. And Mayor and Council, I just want to thank you for your continued support for the skate park project at Monterey Avenue Park. The outpouring of support via email, text, phone call is overwhelming. And actually, the many local businesses that want to contribute to the building of Monterey Avenue Park is a testament to the value the community shares to support the kids and their sport in our community. And I also really want to point out that during the planning hearing process, we welcome any and all input from all parties. And that's the process. So, again, thank you, and thanks.
Thank you, Tricia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Craig Curtis, and I'm a resident of Capitola at 204 Washburn Avenue, and a resident for 29 and a half years. And again, I've seen many changes in the Cliffwood Heights area in my time of being a resident. And it continues to be impacted with the growth and just with, like, the Center for Performing Arts and the Gymnasium. I think we all would agree that schools, the students benefit most when they, and with their academic studies and endeavors, when they have, when they don't have distractions and noise, and that's why libraries are, you know, they're quiet. And I don't believe that this skate park, as it's proposed here at Monterey Park, would be conducive to New Brighton Middle School. I just noticed recently, they do have the signage saying that it is a distinguished school. And I would like to see that preserved for the future students coming up through the ranks in the years to come. I am in support of the skate park at McGregor. That would be, to me, more like-for-like, where you have dogs and barking, and you have kids that are enjoying themselves in skating. And it would not be impacting anything with the freeway noise adjacent to the park, with the dogs and the skating. So, I would plead with the city that they would, again, not think of Monterey Park as a place, that this skate park would be a place that would be most beneficial for Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Good evening, Mayor Norton and council members. My name is TJ Welch. I'm with the Capitola Foundation, and here to do a quick little follow-up on Mayor Norton's proclamation. The foundation is happy to, this, I don't know if you allow advertisements, but that's what this is, is happy to do a dinner for appreciation for our law enforcement, our police officers at Capitola. And we feel very fortunate, not only that we have a, well, great-looking police chief, but that we have a great staff in the police department. And, you know, it's great to live in a community where you actually know most of your officers by name, and not because you've been in the backseat of one of their cars, but because they're familiar to you. So, we're really proud of our police department. And the week of May 10 through the 16th, when we're doing our law enforcement appreciation, we're going to have a fundraiser dinner. It will be at Paradise. And the fundraiser is $40. It includes a $30 meal at Paradise with a fixed menu. And the $10, additional $10 is a donation that goes back to the foundation, which all that money goes to support our police officers. So, if you don't know about the Capitola Foundation, our primary mission is public safety and community groups. And so, we're here to help support our police department, our law enforcement, and the community in groups. So, you can see either one or two of your council members for tickets. You can see me. You can go online and get a phone number. And they are also at Coffetopia and the, I'm sorry, not Coffetopia. Oh, that's a slip. It's Calypso's Cove Coffee Shop here in Capitola. Sorry about that, Justina. And at the Chamber of Commerce. So, we hope you get a ticket. You can go any night, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday with a ticket. And no special time, reserved seating or anything, and have a nice meal. So, that, thank you.
Thank you, TJ. This committee supports you.
Hi, Mayor Norton, Council. On the way down here, I drove, I drove in front of New Brighton Middle School, and there's two signs posted in the front, "No skateboards allowed." So, I'm wondering if there's a skate park adjacent to it, and all these kids show up for school with the school, with the skateboards that they're not allowed to have in school. What are they going to do with those skateboards while they're waiting, sitting out the school day, looking out the window, looking forward to going skating in that skate park? Naturally, I'm opposed to the park at that place, in favor of the McGregor Park. I listened to the honorary speeches, and Stephanie gets kudos for wanting to preserve the environment of, the Capitola environment that we have. I'm assuming that includes green space. And if we put a 6,000-square-foot block of concrete in Monterey Park without a plan as to what else is going to be there, and it's going to be too late to go back and change it once it's there, because things like that are really hard to move, even if we discover later on that it wasn't a good idea. Ron Graves, I'd like to see him again, said that we should find a better way to spend our money. One way we could spend our money better would be to not make a commitment to maintain this park, and maintain two parks, one in Monterey, where it's redundant, would be obligated to maintain. The one in McGregor, but there's really no reason why we have to maintain two. That's it.
Could you give your name for the public record, because you already?
Oh, yeah. Terry Teder.
Thank you, Terry.
T E T E R. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't going to speak. My name is Sherry Siegfried. I just, Mayor, council members, I just wanted to say, I live on Depot Hill. And in the last year, I've noticed kids, 11 to maybe 14, skating in the street. And they're not just skating in the street, they are doing tricks. And, you know, I'm a pretty cautious driver, but, you know, other people aren't. And they're doing tricks in the middle of the road. And I think a safe environment for kids, young kids, to skate is really necessary. McGregor, to me, is a very dangerous area. My kids are grown. I have no kids in this game that skate, do anything. And my, I had girls, they never skated. But I do see children in the street doing tricks, and it's very dangerous. And I think that younger children need a place that's safe in a neighborhood. So, I am, I thank you. I am for the skate park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marla Sanders. I live on Juniper Court. I'm all for a skate park, and I think McGregor is a perfect place for a skate park. I don't see any reason why that's not a safe location. I understand, right now, a pathway to it would, it would be much better if it had a sidewalk. And I don't see any reason why we can't improve on that. But I don't feel that Monterey Avenue Park is a place for a skate park. And I think one skate park for Capitola is plenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Zach Proctor, and I'm a citizen, my mom's Tricia Proctor. And I just wanted to say one thing about McGregor is I don't feel safe, say, my little cousin or my little brother or any of his friends going out to McGregor to go skateboard. I just, I wouldn't let him go out there unless I was with them or with a parent. I would never let him skate there. I would never let him bike there or anything. So, I just wanted to say that I think that Monterey Park is the best place for them to go.
Thank you, Zach.
Hello. Council members, Mayor, thanks for your time tonight. My name's Jason Turner, and I'm here in favor of the Monterey Avenue Park. I think it was well said earlier, Council Member Harlan was speaking about the planning commission and having vision and moving forward with the community, and having this in place for future generations to come. And couldn't have been more well said than having a, having an opportunity like this to have something in the community for the kids and for, you know, future generations to have this at their, at their use. And parks and recreations are essential in any community, and having a positive outlet like this for kids is essential. So, appreciate your consideration in this project and moving it forward. And it seems like there's open forum for everybody to get involved with their opinions as far as, you know, design and so forth. And it sounds like there's plenty of time to work, work that out. So, once again, thank you, and we look forward to this project moving forward.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Rich, can I ask you to come up here for a second, please? Rich, now that the application has been submitted to the city for the proposed skateboard park at Monterey, can you tell us what the public process will be right now and what kind of timetable we're on?
So, the first thing we're going to do is review the application, make sure we have everything that's needed to continue through the process, initiate the SECA process. Once we make a deem complete determination, we'll initiate the SECA process. We're going to do an environmental impact report.
We're going to do an environmental impact report. So, there will be a notice of preparation, public scoping meeting that will be held probably within 60 to 90 days following our determination that everything's complete. Then we'll go away, we'll do the studies, we'll prepare the environmental impact report. That report will be released for a minimum 45-day public review period, and after which we'll collect comments from the public, provide responses, and then prepare to bring the project before the planning commission for the decision on the park itself. And then eventually, the city council will have to weigh in on a right-of-entry-type permit.
So, this will go before the planning commission first, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the city council?
Correct.
And at what point does the public have the opportunity to weigh in on the design of the, of the project and the proposal?
The public can weigh in at any time. Certainly, there's going to be lots of opportunities. The NOP, public scoping meeting, I did fail to mention there'll be an ARC and site meeting, that's a public meeting as well, that residents and citizens can attend. And then, of course, through the sequel process, we receive written comments from the public in the public hearing. So, there's going to be lots of opportunities between now and the final decision day to get public input.
Do we have any databank or any collection of names and people who have spoken up in front of this council or either, through this whole process?
Yeah, we do have a list of names. We've received a lot of emails, of course, you know, when they come and speak at public hearings, we do have their sign-in sheets. So, we, we do have a list of names. I can't say that it's necessarily complete, but there's a long list that's there. And certainly, as we move through, we'll be compiling a list and making sure that we try to keep everybody informed of the process. We'll also try to put more information on the website as it becomes available, so the public can easily access it, know what's going on, and, you know, have a good understanding from home without having to come down here and ask questions if they prefer not to.
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor, we will put this timeline that Rich discussed up on the website. At this point, you know, the dates are going to be tentative until obviously get further into the process, but at least show people where the scheduled hearing dates are and what sequence they'll come. And as soon as they get set, we'll, we'll keep that updated on the website, so people don't have to come down to every meeting.
If there's questions from the public as to the process, who should they contact?
Regarding the planning process, that would be the planning departments are talking to Rich.
Okay. Thank you. I see no one else in the public like to speak. We, staff, is there any, any public comment on any item?
I did want to let, let the council know, I think we've discussed several times, we're getting much closer, and I expect we have the app rolling out relatively soon for the pay parking, so that people can pay on their phones for our pay parking spaces in the village. We expect to have that up and running relatively shortly, I'm hopeful, which would be real, real nice.
Thank you, Jamie. Comments from council? Michael?
I want to thank the mayor for helping facilitate the light opera coming to our, the stage. After the concert program is over and after Art and Wine in Begonia, we're going to have a Sunday afternoon opera session. And like many of the Art and Cultural Commission events, it is at no cost to the city. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael.
And also, perhaps a question, Jamie, you weren't in the room at the time, but there is some concerns about, and you'll be contacted, I'm sure, by Mr. Lippi, about sire links and what's up and what's been dropped. And also, I realize that, I think 2012 was pre-sire time, and if there's any way to get the video that we have up on the site, maybe a link to somewhere, it might be helpful to.
Can you explain what sire is, maybe?
Sire is the, is the, the software that we use to keep legal copies of our videos and our agendas. And it's very orderly, and it keeps everything together. But we didn't bring that into place until after 2012. Therefore, the videos aren't available in an easy format, which is why a public records request of a video costs $29.
Thank you.
I have two comments. Ron almost stole my thunder. Earlier this week, there was a letter to the editor about 38th Avenue. And I think a lot of us here in Capitola read that with some dismay, because the overlay and the fix of 38th Avenue was being sponsored, was being promised when I was running for city council to start anytime soon. So, I was wondering, Jamie, is there any prognosis on this and maybe why it's taking so long? And if you could give us an update, that'd be great.
Let Steve do that, I think.
Let's get the update from Public Records Director.
Yeah. Good evening. So, we actually have plans for 38th Avenue. We had some right-of-way problems there that we're still trying to resolve. At this point, we have a new pavement engineer, having them review the plans. The plans are about five years old at this point, so we need to kind of review them and look at them again. But I do hope to go out to bid very shortly on that project and get it built this summer.
By shortly, what do you mean?
Probably go out to bid, let's see, we're April, so by the beginning of June, we'd be out to bid on that project.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I have one other comment. Recently, I've received a number of complaints about our tree ordinance. And I did talk with Rich about one of those complaints, and apparently, some trees were cut down, about four in one neighborhood, and four neighbors complained about that. I'd like with the council's permission to have a review of our tree ordinance, want to know how it's operating, and maybe it's time for us to let citizens know in Capitola what the ordinance is, so that we don't have situations like this.
Just on that same topic, I was going to suggest that we put an article in our newsletter pretty much every time, reminding people, because there is, there's neighbors on my street, too, that just cut down four trees. And this is because they don't know. You know, they, people just don't know. So, you know, it's just a continual thing. We, that's why I think we need newsletters more regularly, and with just those kind of, that kind of information, that people would just remind them about it.
Because that was, during my campaign, that was one of the constant comments that I received, complaints about how we administer it. Ever since I've been coming to these meetings, I know it's been coming up continuously. So, maybe it's a good time to, you know, have some, a presentation, so the public can be reminded, as you said.
Is there, is there consensus in the council to bring this back to council for discussion?
Are we going to be looking at that as part of the zoning ordinance review? I don't think so. I didn't see it in the list. The, the problem is always, there are people who know the ordinance and still cut the trees down, because it still doesn't cost enough when someone does it illegally.
No.
And we, there's a threshold where we can't go over. Is that true? That we can't make it $100,000 fine?
We actually did, recall that we did amend the ordinance several years back, and we increased the, the potential to fine based on evaluation of the actual tree removed. So, I think there is a theoretical possibility that there could be a $100,000 fine if the tree were of such significant value. I can tell you that, I know that no fine, we've never levied a fee anywhere near that.
No, but we've had someone come in and pay a $20,000 fine without batting an eye, because it was what they wanted to do, and they had the wherewithal to do it.
And they created a buildable lot that was worth $300,000. I, I think that there is some consensus that we discuss this as a council, and so, at the, at the staff's convenience, we'd like this brought back to us, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie?
Just an announcement to encourage people to go to the Special Olympics fundraiser that our police officers and the sheriffs and the CHP are sponsoring this year. They do it annually. It's going to be Thursday, April 30th, from 5:30 to 9:30. And it's at Chili's over on 41st Avenue. We have a special joint city council meeting and planning commission meeting, hooray, that night at 6 o'clock, so we'll have to sneak in there early and get our food early. But it's a, it's a, it's a fundraiser for Special Olympics. So, if you're not doing anything that night, go on over there and get some food, and all the tips go to the Special Olympics. The police officers and the CHP will be there, helping to serve, and so it'll be quite, quite an evening. And there are other volunteers who are welcome, too. So, if you're dying to help, be a volunteer and help them, they would welcome it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I just have one item. I'd like to make a request to put an item on the agenda for discussion. I'd like to discuss the modification of the plan at McGregor Park.
A modification of the plan of the park that's being completed now?
Modification of the plan that's under construction.
What is the proposed modification?
Increase the size of the bike pump track in lieu of the proposed skate park.
I, I may be a little premature to do that. Ed, I think maybe we have to go through a process on this thing before we, we can make a decision as a council, whether to pull the plug on that or not.
But, but isn't a single council member's request all we need to put something on the agenda?
No, it needs consensus of council.
No, it doesn't. It's just, just to announce it at a council meeting, that's what that ordinance says.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Rudy, please.
Regarding staff comments, just a reminder, this weekend is the Wounded Warrior Project, which is down in the village.
That's correct. Saturday and Sunday, they're surfing.
Yes. And so, if you'd like an opportunity to come down and see the event, it's going to be pretty fabulous. The, we have about 25 military folks who have suffered significant injuries who will be down, join the surf as well. Thank you.
That's at 10 o'clock, right?
I believe it starts at 9:00.
Starts at 9:00. There's a, there's a little 10 o'clock ceremony, and we just welcomed them all at Paradise, having dinner there right now. And get yourself down there. That's all I have to say.
Good way to support your troops. I, I have a question of, of city policy regarding sidewalks. We, it seems to me that, that we, in the past, if there was a new single-family residence in a sidewalk area, that we require that a major remodel or new construction requires that a sidewalk be placed in front of the, of a house if it's at, at the owner's expense. Is that, is that true, Steve?
Under our current ordinance, as they're required to.
Okay. So, in regards to the new facility next to McGregor property, where the water district is putting in their facilities now, and they're still in the grading stage, would they not be responsible for putting a sidewalk along the frontage of their property there?
They are putting in a pathway. There isn't a sidewalk included in that project, but I'd happy, let me review that, and we'll have to return to you.
Let's see what we can do with that, Steve. You know, that, okay. Thank you very much. Our, our city treasurer is not here today, so we have no comments from her. Boards, commissions, and committees appointments, Stephanie, I think you.
I'd like to appoint Susan Westman as my planning commissioner.
Okay. And do you have appointment for commission on the environment?
No, but I'll have that next time.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard, Susan Westman. Not here tonight. We moved the consent agenda. All items under consideration under the consent agenda will be taken in one motion unless the item is pulled by the public or by the city council on these items. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull any item on the consent agenda? Being none from the public, the city council?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion of second. And, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, with the exception of 911 funding. I'm staying on. Thank you. Okay, we moved to general government, public hearings. Consider approving the Arts and Cultural Commission 2014-2015 annual report. Michael, I think you have the lanes.
Do we have a slideshow?
Yeah.
We do. So, this is our yearly report to the council. You know what we do, you know how much fun we have, and we help Capitola have fun. The 2014, the purpose is to advise the city council as to the allocation of public funds for the support of existing and new programs in the arts. And this year, we're branching out a little bit and going past the fine arts to cultural events such as concerts, operas, banjos, you name it. It's getting more and more fun all the time. Some of our successful art projects of the last few years, besides the great backdrop on the stage in our summer concert series, we have our stained glass surfboard and other art on 41st Avenue, as well as our traffic boxes, which have just been rehabbed. We got the original artists to go through and touch them up and brighten them, so they stay fresh and as wonderful as Capitola. The 30th year, offering Wednesday evening free concerts. And the chief just left, but it's amazing to me that we can invite 2,000 or 3,000 of our closest friends, and I don't know that we've ever had any serious police action during 30 years of concerts. It's truly amazing. Sunday art at the beach, this is a zero cost to the city of Capitola. The booth fees collected by our staff person, who is a non-paid staff person, not only pays that staff person, but provides for all of the costs for this particular event. In addition to that, we have a sponsor that handles six Sundays of music throughout the summer, with the music coinciding with the Sunday art sales on the beach. Three free movies. And I'm not, I forgot which ones we're showing this year, and I should have had that, but...
They're going to be good.
They're going to be great. They're going to be just epic, okay? So, and it's free popcorn and usually free drinks, if we can get them from McDonald's, and it's big fun. We also do the children's art projects at the Begonia Festival at Art and Wine. We're always there dipping fish into paint and making little prints. It's my favorite thing, is dead sea creatures in the paint. We bring rotating art to the city council chambers, as well as to the police department. And as I mentioned before, we refurbished our public art projects just this year, and they're still the best traffic boxes anywhere in the county, maybe the state. Our dedication for the 41st Avenue project, along with the artist, and the semi-bearded gentleman there, I think is me, and the cake was delicious. This is probably one of the nicest things we've done, the sweetest things we've done in a while. The mural, the first mural was wonderful. We extended the mural to under the overpass. Now that we own the right-of-way, it's easily the happiest entry into the city of Capitola. Is that the end of my slideshow? And we're contemplating having the, the train overpass done in blue, so it matches everything else. So, any questions?
Good work.
Carry on.
Thank you, Michael.
It's the, it's the most we get with the least amount of general fund money anywhere.
And do you have any other projects scheduled for this next year that you're discussing?
Yes, we're, we're looking at, I know Steve is planning a project for a retaining wall and a metal railing in front of Belaroma. So, we are going to take the responsibility of the metal railing out of Steve's project. He doesn't have to buy it. And we're going to use our public art money to put an artistic railing up there and put a call to artists out, and see what we can do with that. We're also working with the folks at the cinema to see if they would like to either put a piece of art at 2% of the project cost in a public area, or if they'd like us to just take their money and put yet another art piece in the median out in front of the theater. A lot of wonderful projects going on. We're going to do a plein air event, which is artists painting in real time out in the air. And it'll be a weekend event, over two days. The artists will be stationed in particular parts of the city. We're going to publish where those areas are. Then at the end, they'll be judged, they'll be given money as an award, and then they'll be able to come back down to the stage to receive the awards and potentially sell their art. A lot of good things happening. We're inviting for next year, the Santa Cruz Symphony. We're going to sponsor a concert at New Brighton Middle School, and perhaps we'll have a string quartet or a small chamber group perform on the stage as well. A lot of great things happening on the Art and Cultural Commission. Did I miss anything, Larry?
No, I think you covered it all.
Stephanie?
There was talk about adding the wall on Capitola Avenue by Hill Street also to your list of, of future projects. I hope that stays on the, is on the list, stays on the list.
It is on the list, and we're pursuing the, the fact that that particular wall does not belong to the city, and we're going to have to approach the, the property owner on that one, because it's not really our wall.
Several ones, right?
Before we, there's, there's four homes there, and we'll have to make sure it's okay, and, you know, before we slap tiles or paint or lord knows what we're capable of.
My, my other request is to not, don't have political signs at any of the Art and Wine or cultural events, or any of those, any of those things. I know they do at, the Police Foundation does at their golf tournament. You know, they solicit, you know, funds if candidates that are running for office want to have their candidate sign up there. And I would just encourage every organization that we have as, as a city to not have any political connections at all. And you don't want to ever ask a candidate to, to give to you or to donate, because it disadvantages others who may not have the money. And it just, it creates an unlevel playing field. And it also, more than that, it interjects politics into art and culture, and you do not want that. You always want to have art and culture seen as worldly, it's open to everyone. We want everyone's support. We want it to be universal. We do not want to have any political fights about it, if at all possible.
I agree, and, you know, I will bring that back to the, to the foundation, because the only place that I've seen that so far, well, two places, actually, the golf tournament, which is easy to get, whole sponsors, and we'll try and keep ourselves apolitical. And also, there was once a float in the Begonia Festival, and someone decided to put a political sign up- sign up as they floated down, and believe me, that was, the good Lori Hill could have stopped that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
It's, and it's, you have, you echo the feelings of the Art and Cultural Commission.
Well, I've been involved a little bit in raising funds for the arts over the years as a former music teacher, and I know that you want to stay far away from politics when you're, when you're asking for funds and support and building that whole community of, around your art and culture. You don't want to...
By the way, we're also looking to put a climbable sculpture of a sea creature in the new McGregor Park. We're looking for a space to put a couple of pieces, like a turtle and a seal and whatever, that look beautiful and can be climbed upon.
That's cool. It's like the museum, Natural History Museum.
I don't often get to surprise Jamie. Well, actually, I surprise you every day. I'm sorry.
Michael, has the Arts Commission ever explored the idea of taking, taking art into the, into the science and, the science world? In other words, using elements that we have, or such as you could have, you could have some kind of contest for flying machines or dealing with, we have a wonderful space there for flying these. We have great winds on the beach here, and being able to creatively make kites, kite contests, or using, using an element that we have in our environment, waves, whatever, to create in our project. Encourage, it would encourage people in the community to participate in the art themselves, and they bring, they bring their item up.
Well, the Chamber does do a kite making and flying competition every year, and I have always wanted to have a driftwood sculpture contest, but we've never figured out how to time it so we knew when all the wood came up on the beach. So, anybody who has any ideas on that, let me know. Maybe Public Works can stockpile it for a few months, and then we can pick a date. Because it happens anyway, we may as well make it a contest.
Timing would be tough. The surf contest, you know, sometimes you can have, sometimes...
Maybe we just give everybody beepers, like Mavericks, and when there's enough wood, we sell everybody's beepers, and it's on.
24-hour notice.
Right.
Okay, we'll move to general government, item B. Consider approving a Santa Cruz County Sanitation District grant easement for SoCal Creek Pump Station, Forest Main.
And I'm going to recuse myself from this and abstain, since I sit on both bodies, and I do receive a stipend from that body. It's not really a salary, but it's a stipend from that body, and I will be voting on it there, too. So, it puts me in the awkward position of having an interest here, a slight financial interest, only it's the city, and being on the sanitation district, too. So, I think I'm just going to recuse myself.
I would like to hear your opinion, though, about Stephanie. Can you give us that before you...
No.
Okay. All right. You're a representative, so that's...
I know.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the item before you is a, actually, quite important project to replace the Forest Main. Just to orient you to the drawing that's in your packet here, we have the Nob Hill Grocery Store and CVS center right where my cursor is now. The sanitation district has the pump station there. I'm sure we all know where that is. We've all smelled it in the past. And currently, the pipeline comes up and comes straight up to Wharf Road here, and then gets down to Wharf Road. That pipeline is approximately 40 years old and in need of replacement. The county is proposing to bore and drill the new pipeline in a diagonal directly up to Claire's. In doing so, it'll cross three parcels that are owned by the city. First one is Perry Park, next one is the Rispin property, and finally, a very small corner of the library property. The entire length of this pipeline through all three parcels will be bored and jacked. That means there will be no disturbance to the above-ground features there. In the middle of the Rispin property, it's approximately 70 feet deep, goes 40 feet under SoCal Creek, so it's not something we're going to see. But like I said, it's very important to try and get that pipeline replaced. The contract that is in the agenda packet was recently reviewed by the city attorney. They have made some recommended changes to it. I'll come back to the timeline. So, we have a revised agreement that we've handed out. My recommendation is you approve the revised agreement, but give the city attorney authority to make some changes as we negotiate those changes with the county. They haven't seen the revised document yet. I will go back to the sewer project timeline and what it affects on our Clare Street Traffic Calming project. So, the construction is scheduled July through December. As we all know, construction projects usually take longer, so I'm proposing that we move forward with the Clare Street Traffic Calming, which we've been waiting for the sewer project to complete before we move forward. That we hold workshops in August and October. We bid the project probably starting in January with a construction of the Clare Street Traffic Calming in spring of 2016. So, get back to my recommendations, and I'm not very important, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Steve, I have heard that the existing 40-year-old pipe is leaking. Is that true?
I haven't heard, I've heard they suspect it may be. I mean, there's no positive proof that it is, but I think certainly, there's been some evidence. We have high counts in the creek all the time, so replacing any of these old lines similar to what they're doing on Noble Gulch is an important part of trying to address that.
How will they abandon the old lines that go into the creek now?
I think they're just going to fill it, they're going to seal the ends and fill it full of, I don't know if they're going to pump it full, sorry, I'm not exactly sure, but I know they'll seal both ends so that there, you know, won't be anything transmitting through it anymore.
It'd be nice to have them, you know, pump the whole thing, so there's no sewage just resting there.
Right. No, they will empty it, yeah. I don't know if they're going to fill it with concrete or not, that would be...
Do you know what pipe material they're using and what the life expectancy is?
Are you going to, I believe it's HDPE that they'll be pulling?
Okay.
Life expectancy of those tends to be about 40 to 60 years.
Okay, good. Thank you. I have no other questions.
I have one other question. So, I went to the meeting that Stephanie just went to, and so I was hoping she'd report on it. Can you confirm, are they redoing the blower and the...
They are redoing quite a bit of the mechanical work inside the pump station. It does include revamping the odor control systems there. I assume that's what you're asking about.
Right.
I will tell you, they'll change them, but they'll still be, have mechanical failures at some point in the future, and will also have continued odor problems, but hopefully they'll address it, and they'll be fewer and farther between than we have currently.
Yeah, my understanding is that the new blower would be larger, more capacity, be able to pump more air, basically.
Right.
And so, when there's problems, this will take care of the smell on the majority of cases.
Yes, that's their goal, yes.
That's good news.
Steve, I'm pretty amazed that they can bore a hole that long and come up at the pump station, so...
Oh, yeah.
And still get underneath the creek.
Yeah, it's, I don't know the technology they're using, but it's, I mean, they're doing a lot of boring on the Noble Gulch project under Highway 1, too, so...
Is there going to be any monitoring during the time that doing work around the creek that, that we need to be aware of? I mean, is there, is there some, is there some way that we have assurance that, that we have a solid seal all the way through, number one? And number two is, is that physically, they're never going to touch the creek, right?
Right.
So, they won't be in the water, they won't be in the water, okay?
70, 40 feet under the creek, yes.
There's no, how many?
40 feet under the creek.
40 feet under the creek?
Yes.
Okay. And so, as long as we have been looking for sources of contamination on that creek, and we've really done our due diligence over the years, you know, we obviously know that the birds are a biggest problem there, that, don't we have readings above and below that point that would tell us if that thing was leaking in the past? I mean, maybe it's immaterial now that we're taking it out, but the point is, is that if that's been a source for us for the last four years, and we didn't know about it, and they knew about it, why weren't we told by sanitation? If they, is sanitation, is this, are they the ones who are saying that they have a leak, or are they...
No, I think it's, like I said, there's no confirm that the existing pipeline leaks. Just like the pipelines in Noble Gulch, or there used to be ones along the creek on Riverview Drive, they're suspected of leaking. It's very difficult to actually measure it and determine there's a leak. You could sample, but that pump goes on and off all the time, and there is high counts still above there, above where that pipeline crosses. So, it's just, they're doing their due diligence to replace all the aging pipelines along the waterways.
So, are they going to put their boring machine up there on Claire's there?
No, the boring machine's down by the pump station. They're going to bore from...
Goes from below and comes up?
Yes.
How do they get 40 feet down and then come back up again?
They...
They can do it.
They dig a deep hole, yeah.
Doesn't go straight.
Dennis, they just bored under Highway 1, and no one ever knew it.
Yeah. There's a, if you want, you could go up to the corporation yard.
Oh, yeah.
There's a 40-foot-deep bore pit in our corporation yard right now. So, they dig a really deep pit, put the boring machine down the bottom of it, and start going.
And they keep, as they bore, as they bore and they set the pipe as they go through? Is that...
I think, well, there's different methods, and I'll be honest, I don't know them all. But I think this one, they're actually pulling, they're going to drill, and then they're going to pull the host pipe through all at once. And if, their plans include a large staging area in the Nob Hill parking lot where they can lay out this whole pipe and pull it through at one time.
They welded the pieces together.
Yeah.
Is this, is this kind of the future technology of anything that's subterranean within...
Certainly, certainly, you know, anything this deep it is. There's still, you can see on Noble Gulch, they're trenching, they're still doing the trenching methods, because economically, it's still cheaper to do that on anything above 10 feet deep it is, but...
It's cheaper to dig it still.
It's cheaper to dig it still, yeah.
And shorter distances.
And I'm thinking about how much, how much time we spend with our roads torn up, if there was some boring machine that could take care of everything that's subsurface for us.
Certainly, the, we've seen, people probably even know, we have the cable company boring under 41st Avenue. They've done like three or four bores over the last year. They go out at night, they pothole all the utilities, make sure they know where they are, and they're boring a new service underneath 41st, so it's certainly a viable technology.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this issue? Being none, come back to council.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. I have a question of what happened tonight. Stephanie, maybe this is for Barbara. Stephanie chose to reclusive herself because she sits on the agency that votes on an issue like this, yet she's our city representative on this council for those agency. Is there, is there a conflict of interest in issues like this?
I was concerned about a conflict of interest because while it's, I reviewed the Government Code, Section 1090, which addresses this issue, and I, in talking with her, we decided it's more of a precautionary matter that, and she felt more comfortable recusing herself because of the fact that she does receive a stipend from the sanitation district, and in this contract, there could be a perception that by this district receiving compensation from the city, that that would also implicate her having a financial interest in making this decision.
Doesn't make sense. Well, I think all of us sit in positions like this...
It's remote, it's remote.
Yeah.
And just taking a precautionary approach.
Well, if a council member is sitting on here, they are representative of the city to this issue, and I personally feel that I want to hear her input or something. I sit on the RTC. Should I reclusive myself every time there's going to be a project on this rail line up here? I get a stipend.